First, thank you guys for joining us this evening. For those of you that don't know who I am, I'm Elaine Romero. I was policy analyst. I was policy analyst for Ken Sanchez for 15 years. He was my friend, my mentor, and more so my family. Thank you to his family for allowing me to continue to keep that place in the Sanchez family. I wasn't going to speak tonight, but his daughter, Rochaclin, and I have spent a member of phone calls today crying. So I'm sorry if I've got tears in my eyes and my voice, but I'm gonna blame it on her. She shared something with me that I hadn't seen in a while, that I thought was only fair that all of you guys would share, because I know it's gonna put a smile on everyone's face here. I know you're here because you loved Ken. And Ken had to have been one of the most positive people I have ever met. In any situation, he always found the silver lining. So today, you guys celebrate Ken and his life and his birthday today. With that, if everyone will turn their attention to the screen, Joaquin? You need to make it go, yes? And you guys might want to come this way if you can see it. Thank you, Joaquin. Thank you to Joaquin Zamora, Ken's son-in-law, for helping me figure that out, because God knows I don't do well with technology. And my current boss, City Councilor Lance Senna, laughed at me because those were the first few words I shared with her when I was so lucky for her to ask me to stay on. With that, thank you all. We are gonna open the doors back up because it is getting a little warm in here. But thank you again for being here and celebrating, to me, one of the best men who's ever lived.
Well, thank you so much for that, Elaine. Today, we are gathered here in celebrating the life and public service of our late Councilor Ken Sanchez. Councilor Ken Sanchez was an avid champion of the West Side and of the city of Albuquerque, whose legacy and imprint of his dedication to community will be felt for many generations to come. He is profoundly missed at council, in the district, and throughout the city. However, a great soul serves everyone, all the time. It never truly leaves us, and it brings us together again and again, just as Councilor Sanchez has brought us together today. As we celebrate the life of Councilor Ken Sanchez on a day that would have been his 65th birthday, I cannot think of a better way in honoring his life than dedicating Fire Station 7 in his name. He was a champion of community safety, of our fire department, and the well-being of our community, as many of our neighborhood associations can attest to today. A fire station, in my view, is the pinnacle of a community that we lean on for public service 24/7, attributes that Councilor Ken Sanchez amplified. I am honored to be here today to celebrate his life, his legacy, and commitment to the district and the city. I want to also thank Councilor Peña for championing the bill prior to my arrival on City Council that really dedicated the station in his name. And also for my fellow colleagues. And to all of council for unanimously supporting the bill. I think we can all say that Ken really always did bring the whole council together. And I also want to thank Council President, Council Borrego, who also shares a birthday today, so I believe she will be in attendance. Happy birthday to Council Borrego. But I also want to thank the mayor, Chief Gallegos, and the entire Albuquerque Fire Department, our local IAFF 244, our AFD Retirees Association, and the Sanchez family, and of course Elaine. Most of you know that you could not talk to Councilor Sanchez without seeing or talking to Elaine. She is and always has been dedicated to her job, but also to Councilor Sanchez as well. I want to take this opportunity to thank her for everything she has done and continues to do for the district in honoring Ken Sanchez's commitment to public service. So thank you, Elaine. And with that, I'm going to bring up Councilor Clarissa Peña.
Thank you, Councilor Senna. You know, I'll start by giving some thanks here too, because Councilor Senna, I think she's come in and she's just done a remarkable job. She knows that when she was first appointed by the mayor, you know, I had my reservations and tested her, but she has just done an outstanding job filling his shoes. So thank you, Councilor Senna. You know, I can tell a lot of stories about how we advocated for this when I used to be part of SWAN in the West Central Community Development Group. I see a lot of the neighbors that are here today who were part of that advocacy when we were trying to get this fire station moved from 57th Street all the way up here. I see Lisa Unser, I see the Whorls. I mean, raise your hand if you were part of the community when we used to work on this. I see the folks from Tres Volcanes here. And you know, it just takes a lot of work. But really what it takes is a champion to make sure that it comes to reality and to fruition. And working with Councilor Sanchez at the time I was doing the community work, and he really, really, he was passionate about it. He heard the voices of the community, he listened. He wanted to make sure that it happened. You know, we worked with the state legislature. And, you know, when it was built, I mean, this became like his pride and joy. As many of you know, his office is across the street. So he followed every step of the way as it was being built, as it was being developed. You know, I was just, one of the memories popped up on my phone, ironically, probably because it's his birthday, but of us having the ribbon cutting here at the fire station. And so today, it's been like a surreal feeling, you know? It's just like weird that we're actually having this discussion, this renaming of the fire station to his name, because there's parts of him that feel like they're still here and that he's still here and there's reminders of him, you know, all over the place. And just looking out at the faces, the former fire chief is here. There's a lot of faces that were here the day that we had that ribbon cutting. And you know, Councilor Senna, you know, when I talked about the renaming when she came in, you know, she automatically jumped on it and was happy to have it renamed after Ken. And, you know, I'm just getting a little choked up, just thinking that, you know, we're doing this, and I want to thank his family. It's just, it's a happy day because it's gonna be named after Ken, and he is passionate about this. And, but it really, it's a sad time, it's a sad time as well. So I can see where Elaine, how she's feeling the way she feels. So I will just end with that. And I just want to thank Mayor Keller as well, and just appreciate you for, you know, your willingness to support this, obviously, and the rest of the council in the renaming of the fire station. So thank you all for being here, I appreciate it.
And thank you for that, Councilor Peña. And next up, a word from our mayor.
Well, thank you so much, Counselor. And it's so, you know, let me just acknowledge too, it is so wonderful to see everyone's faces, even our smiles and sometimes our tears, to be gathered in person. A lot of you I haven't seen, actually, since Ken's funeral. I was thinking about that when I walked in, but we remember, you know, the pandemic in between. But I also remember many, many moments where sometimes it was with Councilor Peña or others when, over the last 18 months, we not only missed Ken, but we wanted him to help us. And we looked to him for guidance during what we all went through. And I have to say that, you know, you come up to this part of town, and it's Ken Sanchez country. You know, I can almost see him walking across the street to Max from the office. And I think even during, every year now during tax prep, I mentally think about, well, how do I find time to meet with Ken? Because it's only gonna be, you know, the Saturday morning he would allocate or whatever. Everything else had to be only taxes. But in many ways, I also just believe that he is so much with us, and whether it's us as individuals or even as our city. When you look around this city and you see all of the different projects he was a part of, including this tremendous fire station, which is so fitting that we're naming after him. But it's even the Attrisco Village, the Attrisco Project, Nuevo Attrisco up the street, or dozens and dozens of other projects all over our city that I believe essentially bear his name already, because they were gifts from him and from his vision to our city and to future generations. And I also know that, you know, again, given what we've been through, the light that Ken showed us during tough times as a community and as a country is something I also reflect on often. You know, we disagree whether it's partisan lines or whether it's different issues. And Ken, for decades, would move past those conflicts. I feel like that was trademark Ken. I remember disagreeing with him about a particular economic development project on the Big Eye. And I remember in my mind being like, gosh, you know, I hope, I hope our relationship is gonna be stronger than this disagreement. And the amazing thing is, with Ken, it always was. When we brought it up and we said, alright, well, what are we doing next week? Which is other issues that we have to work on together. And I think of that spirit and that attitude, and I hope that in many ways, people remember that, especially those of us in public service, that, you know, we're gonna disagree, and we're gonna move on, and we're gonna do what's best for Albuquerque. Because that is what Ken did every single week of his public service career. And that is what I'm so grateful for, and that is what I hope I've carried a little bit of, and I hope as a city we do going forward. Because we need his guidance, we need his energy, and we need his optimism each and every day in our lives, and I believe it is with us. And so for that, Ken, thank you for continuing to give to Albuquerque. Thank you so much.
Thank you for those remarks, Mayor Keller. I know that Ken definitely left a mark on all of us and somehow has ties to us all. Even he did my parents' taxes when I was little as well. Next up, we have our council president, Council Borrego. And I also want to wish her a happy birthday, so, Council Borrego?
Well, I'm gonna take one moment to take a breath. I'm driving in from Espaniola, and I drove up last night to spend the day with my mother. So, but this morning, when I woke up, the first call that I had was from Jackie, Ken's daughter, Jackie Sanchez. And she called me to wish me a happy birthday. And she and I both got a little emotional because today is Ken's birthday as well. And for the last, I don't know, maybe 20 years or so, Ken and I would call each other every day to wish each other a happy birthday. And it's, it's a little emotional to be here. Because for those of you who don't know, I used to work for the city. And I worked in the redevelopment areas. And there was a point in time where Ken was a city councillor and Councilor Peña was in charge of the Community Development Corporation that they had up here. And they came to my office one day to meet with me. And they were really interested in purchasing this property where this fire station is and just down the street. Where, and they had a master plan for this area that they wanted to see this area develop. You know, they had certain uses that they wanted to see. And this is a redevelopment area, by the way. So when I was the, I was in charge of the redevelopment for the city of Albuquerque, that was one of the last jobs I had as a city councillor, I mean, as a city planner. And they brought this master plan into the office and they said, Cynthia, this is how we want to see this area develop. And so we purchased the property with redevelopment funds, and Ken was instrumental. And I say Ken, Council Sanchez was instrumental in finding the money to purchase this property. And a few years later, we built this fire station. So that was one of the last projects I did as a city planner. I think probably one of the last things that Council Peña did as the executive director of that particular group. And so it's very, it's very emotional to be standing in front of all of you amazing people. And I know that today, Ken is looking down on us. And he's just saying, thumbs up, guys, because we're doing, and there he is. So I'm just really happy to be here, to have seen this project come to fruition and with the mayor and the chief. We miss Chief Dow, but that's when we dedicated the station. And today, it's an honor to dedicate the station to Council Sanchez. So thank you all for being here today. And I look forward to other projects that we see come to fruition as we move forward. Thank you.
Thank you for that, Madam President. And as many of you know, this legislation was supported unanimously to dedicate Station 7 in Ken Sanchez's name. So next, I want to bring up Councilor Dawn Harris.
Thank you, Counselor. Thank everyone for coming. How many people in here met with Ken at Max? I think probably a lot more too. You cannot understand how much of city business, how many ordinances, how many things were built because of conversations that happened at Max. And I know with Ken, and by the way, one of the things I want to talk about with Ken, did you notice that little video that was played? Do you know, there was one word that was not heard in that video, the word "I." He said, "I'm Ken Sanchez," and immediately the first word, the next word after that was "we." So that is why there are so many people here today on a hot Monday afternoon paying tribute to Ken Sanchez. Because everything was about "we." And as some of the other counselors hinted at, I've been with Ken, I served for 15 years. And there were lots of times where people, because he was so influential, didn't like him or what he was doing. Because, you know, the old saying goes, if you're gonna make an omelette, you gotta crack some eggs. And Ken did, I mean, he had to vote against people. He used to say to me, you're at the height of your popularity the day after you get elected, because then you have to start making decisions. And sometimes people went after Ken. They would do things to him which are pretty nasty. And not only did Ken immediately forgive people, you got the impression that he didn't even notice. You know, you were kind of waiting to feel the blowback from him from some of these things that people tried to do to him. And he didn't even notice, it didn't faze him. He just marched ahead with a smile, doing the right thing. Now, one of the reasons I'm here today is Ken was my best friend on the council. Ken and I got elected at the same time in 2005. And there was this dispute, we disagreed bitterly over this thing called the streetcar. And I really made Mayor Chavez angry with that because I was one of the deciding votes, which is why there is no streetcar in Central right now. It's gonna be Mayor Chavez's signature project. And what happened was that I went through a recall election. I call myself the most elected city councillor because I had a recall and a runoff. Anyway, I went through this recall election. And the mayor was a very, very good friend of Ken's. And the mayor at the time was also supporting the recall election. And my books were a mess. And they tried to use that against me to get recalled, to say I had committed all these ethics violations, when actually it was just sloppy bookkeeping. Ken put my books together and testified for me. And it made Mayor Chavez furious. And he called Ken into his office and said, "Why are you doing this?" Ken said, "Because he didn't do anything wrong." And from that day forward, Ken and I were like best friends on the council. And Ken, you know, I'm from Connecticut, which is a very, very blue state. I don't think has ever voted Republican in generations. And I used to tell Ken, tease Ken, you know, there's a word for you in Connecticut, Ken, it's called a Republican. And people, you know, both the bases of our parties, I was considered a moderate Republican on the council, and he's considered a moderate Democrat. The base of my party oftentimes didn't like me because I was always making deals with Democrats to try to do the right thing. And same with Ken. They often saw him as working too closely with me. And Ken and I just sponsored so many pieces of legislation together because we were such good friends. And I just really want to thank you and ask you all to give yourself a round of applause for being such good friends with Ken and for really recognizing, as he did, the sense of community. Because Ken made us all better. And I just want to thank you all for being here.
Thank you for that, Counsel Harris. And next up, we have our fire chief, Jean Gallegos.
Thank you, thank you so much, Councilor Senna. So, as Councilor Senna mentioned, I'm interim fire chief, Jean Gallegos. And it's amazing to see the positive impact that Council Sanchez had, not only on the community, but on everybody that he came in contact with. He was an amazing man. Everybody knew it from the moment they shook his hand. That's the kind of man he was. I was honored to be able to stand next to him and work with him in the city of Albuquerque. He influenced, inspired, and mentored so many people, including myself. As I was thinking today of what to say, I was reminded of a quote by Jim Rohn, "The challenge of a leader," that reminded me of Ken Sanchez and the type of leader he was. "The challenge of a leadership is to be strong but not rude, be kind but not weak, be thoughtful but not lazy, be humble but not timid, be proud but not arrogant, have humor but without folly." That is the kind of leadership that Ken had. That is the kind of leadership that he made me want to be and have. So, growing up on the West Side, attending Truman Middle School, West Mesa High School, and in my career as a firefighter, Council Sanchez was always known as one of the leaders and friends to AFR and to our community. Although he was not a firefighter, I believe he had the heart and the qualities of an extraordinary firefighter. His commitment to public safety and to the community has been historic. I know I am somewhat biased, being a resident of the West Side, but needless to say, all firefighters and public safety officers are biased to Councilor Ken Sanchez. Over his 24 years as a community leader and as a public servant, he was always had public safety as one of his top priorities. His commitment to making sure AFR had the newest equipment, from bunker gear, thermal imaging cameras, fire trucks, to his main point of helping move this station, Fire Station 7, from its old location on 47th Streets to this new amazing fire station that you stand in today, his commitment was unwavering. This is the way that we know that we stand here today to remember Council Sanchez and his commitment to public safety. We are memorializing and historicalizing his commitment to public safety. I would like to thank his family. historicalizing his commitment to public safety. I would like to thank his family, his daughters, grandchildren, for all the support that you gave to Ken Sanchez. Without your support, we know that he would not have been able to do all the things that he did today. And last, I would like to thank Ken Sanchez for all the amazing dedication that he gave to us. Thank you, Ken. You will be missed.
Thank you for that, Fire Chief Gallegos. Certainly will be missed. Next up, I have the IAFF Local 244 President, Justin Cheney.
Thank you, Councillor. Appreciate it. On behalf of the Albuquerque Area Firefighters, I want to welcome you guys into your fire station. This is your fire station. Our members, they come from all over the metro area to work here. But this community has made them feel like they are part of the family. And I believe that is a direct reflection of Ken's leadership and dedication to the West Side. So we thank you all and welcome you into your firehouse. Ken Sanchez was a longtime supporter of public safety and a friend to the firefighters. He worked, he worked to ensure that our firefighters were paid a decent wage and fought to keep them safe with proper staffing and resources. And I believe that this station is evident to that. The positive impact Ken had on our community will be long lasting. Ken will be remembered not because of his name on this beautiful fire station, but because of all the hearts he has touched. Anytime you would see Ken, he would make it a point to stop and check on how the firefighters were doing. It is an honor to be part of this dedication ceremony. Elaine was telling us, you know, maybe tell a little story. And this isn't really about firefighting, but it's, so I remember going to the pit, watching, I think it was the Lady Lobos, and Ken was there. Ken wasn't wearing the Lobo shirt though. He was wearing something else. And I was like, Ken, what are you doing? He had a whole gag of people with him, and he was there watching his granddaughter. I remember that. And he was just beaming with pride, like he did every time you spoke with him. When it was about his community, whether it was about his family, or whether it was about firefighters, Ken beamed with pride. And we appreciate his leadership. He'll be sorely missed. But I want to thank the Sanchez family for such, for sharing such a great person with us. So thank you all. We appreciate you.
Thank you. Next up, we have AFD Retirees President, Kerry Horton.
Thank you, Councillor Senna. As she said, my name is Kerry Horton. I am the president of the Albuquerque Fire Department Retirees Association. I was with Albuquerque Fire Rescue. Back in my day, it was a department. Today, it's a rescue. AFR, I was with them from 1991 to 2012. And I am truly honored to be here tonight for the Ken Sanchez Station dedication. I first met Ken in 1996, when he was a county councillor. Yeah. My captain, Brian Levy, and I were returning to Station Four late one evening after a structure fire here on the West Side. We stopped at a McDonald's over there at Coors and I-40 for a late-night snack. And since our trucks don't fit in the drive-thru, we went inside. As we ordered, a gentleman stepped up behind us and insisted on paying our bill. Brian turned around and recognized Ken right away. I had only lived in Albuquerque since 1991, and I had no idea who Ken was at the time. Brian and Ken exchanged greetings and I was introduced. After a short argument on who was going to pay the bill, Ken paid it and we thanked him. And we returned to our station. I don't remember the exact occasion when I met Ken again, but I do remember that he remembered my name. And he acted like we'd known each other for years. But all you know, but all of you know that, that that's the way Ken was. He treated everybody like family and friends. Over the years, I had had the pleasure of seeing Ken many times. Ken was one of the best friends that AFR has ever had. He supported the department and this district in more ways than we can ever mention here. I can't think of a better way to honor Ken than to dedicate Station Seven in his name. Ken was a driving force in getting this station built. And just as Ken did his whole adult life, this station is here to protect and serve the community and the neighborhood. This district will always be Ken's neighborhood. Thank you.
Yes, as the mayor said, this is definitely Ken Sanchez country. Next up, we have Captain Gregory Aragon to share a special story about Ken.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Greg Aragon. And for the last seven years, I've been trying to tell Mr. Sanchez's heroic story. So here it goes. For those of you who do not know the story of Mr. Sanchez, his great selfless heroic act on December 24th, 2014, a full complement of fire apparatus was dispatched to a single-family dwelling just north of this station. Engine Seven was first to arrive approximately three minutes after dispatch. Upon arrival, Engine Seven made visual contact of the home, determined it to be a working fire, and witnessed the homeowners being escorted out of the side door by a neighbor. The neighbor who stepped in to help was Albuquerque's very own City Councillor, Ken Sanchez. He made a choice to walk around the neighborhood that day, talk to people, just say hi. When he arrived, when we arrived, we saw Mr. Sanchez walking with the homeowners from their house. And nearly 15 feet from them, Mr. Sanchez was wearing loose-fitting street clothes. I wanted to speak with him after we extinguished the fire, but once we were complete, he was nowhere to be found. After he turned to the quarters, I asked if it would be appropriate to nominate Mr. Sanchez for Friday's Hero Award. Sadly, it did not happen for him. But tonight, I stand with you to help deliver his story of heroism, selflessness, and dedication to our community. He made the choice to put his safety at risk, to stand and fight for those who cannot fight for themselves. And he chose not to wait for us. He has been my hero and has been my honor to bring Mr. Sanchez home. Thank you.
Thank you for that, Captain. I just want to share that really, that spirit of rushing to a scene to save your own community member definitely runs in the Sanchez blood. I want to take this time to also mention that Ken's own niece, Tamara, actually rushed to the scene after the tragedy of the hot air balloon and was one of the first to actually respond. So I want to acknowledge and that she's here and really thank you. That, yeah, thank you. Thank you for that. It's that spirit, whether it was Ken's true calling or Ken telling Tamara to get up. She just dropped everything to respond to that scene. So I just want to say thank you and really that spirit of community. Next, I have West Central Community Development Group and Southwest Alliance of Neighborhoods, Luis Hernandez.
Thank you, Councillor Senna. Gosh, what can I say about Ken that hasn't already been said? You know, just a phenomenal guy. You know, as you guys know, he was a dedicated public servant, you know, a strong advocate for, I call it our West Side, right? Constantly working on, there we go, is that better? Constantly working on the betterment of our area here. Just what Ken did. He didn't know any different. Ken was about the West Side, right? A role model to many people, mentor to many. I remember the first time I met Ken was probably about 14 years ago, at a church fiesta. San Martin Fiesta's in Westgate. And I was playing on the stage with a band, and I was watching Ken work the crowd, and he was shaking everybody's hand and having conversations with each and every person. And when I got off the stage, I went to shake his hand, and he pulled me in and he gave me a big hug, like we had known each other for 50 years, right? Wasn't even that old. But that was Ken, right? I continued to see Ken at all the church fiestas around town from that point on, and always knew him as, as the man of the people, right? I called him the mayor of the West Side, right? Because that's what he was, right? He was a champion for the West Side. And, you know, for us at the, at the West Central Community Development Group and at Swan, you know, Ken was, he was a lot more than that to us. Ken was our partner in crime. You know, Ken was the left hand, the right hand, the middle man, and the everything man, right? You know, Councillor Penya and all the leaders of Swan and West Central before myself, you know, had the wonderful opportunity of being able to work hand-in-hand with Ken on so many wonderful projects for our West Side. This fire station is just, just one of those many projects. And I know that he was super proud of this project here. And, you know, just for our group, we were fortunate to be able to work with him to advocate for this project here. And so, on behalf of the West Central Community Development Group and Swan, I know that all the members are forever, you know, grateful to, to Ken's family. You know, we're forever grateful to Ken himself, right? You know, to the city of Albuquerque, Mayor Tim Keller, you know, city council, you know, for the opportunity to be here and participate to honor Ken's life and his legacy. And so with that, you know, Ken, you'll be forever, forever missed, but never forgotten. Thank you.
Thank you for that, Luis. And next up, from the West Side Coalition of Neighborhood Associations, our past president, Jerry Worrell. There's also a neighbor and friend to Ken.
Well, thank you very much. I got one of those calls that I'm sure everybody in this room has gotten from Elaine Rivero. And it starts out, and I know all of you will appreciate this, the first thing to say to Elaine is "no," because that's the last time you will get to say it, okay? So she said, as past president of the West Side Coalition, would you please say some words about Ken? She said, "You won't have more than a minute or a minute and a half." I said, "Well, Elaine, having had to testify in front of the city council many times, I don't know that I can talk that long, because they usually give me a minute, minute and a half, okay?" So I'm going to take this opportunity to talk a little longer to the councillors. How do I talk about Ken? As a community activist, not by necessarily by choice, but we had an incident in our neighborhood, and that's how I met Ken. And I called him up and I said, "Ken, what are we going to do about this situation?" And he said, "This, this, and this." We ended up with our own West Side, our own neighborhood patrol. I ended up as president of the Neighborhood Association. A little later on, Ken had me on the Park and Rec Advisory Board. A little bit later on, I was the homeowners association representative for our neighborhood. A little later on, he said, "You ought to know Dr. Jovias." That was a mistake, okay? And, and so with Dr. Jovias, I end up as president of the West Side Coalition. Now, for those of you who know a little bit about the West Side Coalition, if you've ever tried to herd cats, that's the job description of that. As Ken was fond of saying, "You have the worst job in the city with, with what you have to do." But what was important with Ken, and he and I had some wonderful disagreements, I also had the pleasure of being Ken Sanchez's neighbor. So not only did he prepare my taxes, he was my neighbor, I was on the West Side Coalition president, and I can't tell you how many times he screwed up my agenda by yapping on and on about the latest project that needed doing. If, every minute that I give him on the agenda, there are not enough blocks in this building for how much he talked about this building and the need for it. And if you knew Ken, if he had a project that he believed in, by golly, you were going to hear about it, okay? And again, and again, and again. So I always enjoyed those, those times with him, because we didn't always agree. We always didn't see the same issue the same way. And Ken had a wonderful habit of waiting until about 10:30, 11 o'clock at night to decide that he wanted to talk to his neighbor. So he called me one night about 11 o'clock, 11:15, something like that. He said, "Come on over. I'm sitting on the patio. Let's, let's have a talk." I said, "Ken, I'm in my pajamas." He said, "Oh, who's going to care?" Okay. I said, "Okay, buddy. You want a Republican in his pajamas coming into your house in the middle of the night?" I said, "You have no sense of politics at all, none whatsoever. That's the last thing you want, because, believe me, I don't want to sleep with you." So, to go on with Ken, the important thing, as you community activist people understand, is that with Ken, you could disagree, as long as you were disagreeing and supporting the people that you represent. And that was the wonderful part about working with him on so many different projects and so many different times. When he was on his last campaign, showing up at my door, I don't know if he wanted $5 or what for public financing or whatever, but he shows up at my door and, and you know, Ken had a horrible diabetes problem. And he had not eaten, and he was sweaty, and he was not very good. And here are he and Cynthia at the door, and my wife, being a born and bred New Mexican, knew immediately the first aid for his problem. It was about five minutes later that Cynthia was relieved, because Frida, my wife sitting here, we had the beans, we had the chili, and we had the tortilla. Everything was done, and Ken was fine in about five minutes after that feed. So I learned that the first aid kit in our house is that, okay? But, but with Ken, I want to leave you with one story that you will really enjoy. He and I were coming out of the Petrelaf Homeowners Association meeting. And this woman came up to us and she said, "I want to talk to you too." And so Ken and I said, "Yeah, how can we help you?" She said, "I got a fine from the Petrelaf Homeowners Association, because my driveway is deteriorating, and I have spaceships land in my driveway, and aliens are coming to visit me." This is a true story. This is a true story. Ken looks at me and he said, "Jerry." He said, "You've got this one." And away he went. Now, that's the only time I ever saw him back away from anything, but I guess I can understand why. The, the last thing that I want to say to you is this, if there's ever been a person who represented what we all would love our representatives to be, it was Ken Sanchez. He was there. He showed up all the time. I never, he had perfect, he had better attendance at the Petrelaf Home, or the Neighborhood Association, or at the West Side Coalition than, than any of the rest of us did. He was always there. He was prepared to speak. Hard to give him the hook, once he got that microphone. But Ken, you are going to be missed by this community, and we are so blessed to have had you. Thank you.
And thank you, Jerry. And we truly are very blessed for all of those that knew Ken. And of course, no one is more blessed than his own family. So I want to bring up Jaclyn Sanchez, Ken's daughter.
Thank you, Councillor Senna. Thank you, everyone, for being here. My name is Jaclyn Sanchez. It is with the utmost gratitude that I have the honor of representing my father, Councillor Ken Sanchez. He was a huge advocate for public safety. He had a passion for protecting the people of the community that he grew up in, and where his father Gilbert and mother Frances built their tax office right here on West Central in the 60s. My father fought tirelessly to ensure that first responders were provided with the best facilities and equipment to keep them, keep up with the growing and always changing needs of Albuquerque, never forgetting the huge responsibility and how important it was that our heroes were brought home safely to their families. Ironically, I, my father spoke- home safely to their families. Ironically, my father spoke of when he was a kid, he wanted to be a fireman. I think that dream was extinguished when him and my uncle Gilbert started their legal fireworks stand right across the street here on West Central. And if you ever know my uncle, my father, it's legal. And then also, maybe when him and his buddy Paul Valencia, also an AFR retired fiery, put extra incense in the third bowl at Church at Holy Rosary and smoked out the entire church. So I think, you know, no pun intended, but it went up in flames. And I remember when the new Station Number 7 was under construction, my dad told me about a woman he pictured in the artwork, that I guess it was, you know, a huge thing, that she was a staple in the other building on 47th Street. And they really were worried about preserving her. She was concerned that the... It was a guardian angel for the station, and they were concerned that she would not leave from 47th Street and come to 37th Street. Of course, my dad was like, you know, of course she's going to show up. She's going to fly right over. She's an angel. She's got wings. She'll hop from 47th Street to 37th Street. And that's no problem. I mean, if it was today, she would take the art bus down Central, but other than that. So I, you know, today, I believe that Station 7 still has its long-haired, beautiful guardian angel looking after her, after the station. But they have also acquired a charming, new witty angel who just happens to wear a black tie and slacks, and he's always at every event in town. So on behalf of the entire Sanchez family, I would like to thank Mayor Keller and his administration, the entire City Council, especially Counselor Penya, Counselor Senna, and Counselor Borrego, Albuquerque Fire and Rescue Chief Jean Gallegos, former Fire Chief Paul Dow, IAFF Local 244 President Justin Chaney and its members, Albuquerque Fire Rescue Association President Kerry Horton and its members, and of course, my dad's right-hand Elaine Romero, for honoring my father upon his death and on his birthday today, July the 12th, with the most admirable, respectable, and suitable gift that one could have been given. Thank you for memorializing him as a pillar he was in our community. And thank you to the people of Albuquerque, and especially to the people of District 1, for giving my father the opportunity to provide the community with his fierce, optimistic, and compassionate leadership. Now, every time we drive up Central and pass Station 7, please remember, a great man once said, "I truly believe, together, we can make a difference." Thank you.
Thank you so much for that, Jaclyn. And now, I want to take this opportunity to also remind us that this is a life celebration, that we are here to really honor and remember Counselor Sanchez. So after the unveiling, I do want to invite everyone to enjoy some delicious food from Max Lassier, and thank you to John and Linda for providing that, of course. We could not honor Ken without Max, so of course, that's what we did. So now, at this time, I would like to invite everyone to join us outside for the unveiling, and we will do a community countdown.
Okay, so we're going to do two countdowns. This one is for the plaque, so just going from backwards altogether.
Backwards altogether.
Three, two, one. Okay. So now, we're going to work on that one over there. But should we all stand?
Yes, can we all move in front of the fire station?
So, you're going to climb up the ladder?
We're going to turn the ladder.
All right. So, let's let Ken hear this one. Three, two, one.
Just one other presentation that we have that I didn't quite expect, and I think it's very special. Fire Chief Gallegos, our firefighters, can some of you come up, please? I'm sure all of you guys were aware that our late Bobby Unser was a very, very good friend of Ken. Not just Ken, his whole family. Bobby's wife is here to present something to our fire department. Lisa?
And he's a very good friend. We were very honored to host him at the 2018 Indianapolis Fire Festival, and he was a wonderful guy. And little Bobby, you're up in the building right now, speaking down, saying yahoo. And the fire department was very instrumental in helping out Bobby in his last six months. And I just wanted to bring their favorite cookies and a choir hat. This is Bobby Unser, and it also says, help wanted, girls are nice.
Thank you, everyone, for being here. I know that there are a lot of elected officials in the audience today, a lot of dictators. Thank you, guys, for your friendship and hard work. And I know that I should hi-five my friends. Well, I personally know, work in, I grew up with him, I love him. And I know, I've been here for a couple of years, and I appreciate it every single time here. Thank you for being here. Please, though, if you're interested, I'd have you on.